All older persons are present. Thank you all for being here. Item three on our agenda this evening is a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Item four on our agenda this evening is the explanation or the visitor speaking procedure. Individuals here tonight that are in the audience that wish to address the body may do so on non-public hearing items, in which the public hearing items were already held, after being acknowledged by a council member. So if you wish to be, wish to speak to the body tonight on an item that is non-related to a public hearing, please indicate so by raising your hand, and then an older person may yield their time. The time at the podium is limited to five minutes, and we encourage, remind you to introduce yourself for the benefit of the viewing audience as well as for the record up here. We'll move on to item number six, which is my report. One second here. That might take you a minute. Too much paper up here tonight. All right, we'll pull it up electronically here. All right. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here watching from home. The first item on my report tonight is around the Metalko project. The exciting project becomes closer to a reality with the establishment of the tax increment district, the developers agreement, and the land sale to Metalko, all of which will be acted upon tonight. Their $80 million investment will result in a minimum of $8 million in new tax base and a minimum of 80 full-time good-paying jobs with over $4 million in annual payroll projected with that project, to be located in the Rapids East Commerce Center. We hope the rest of the behind-the-scenes work goes well, including the DNR permitting of which they have to apply for yet, which will result, hopefully, in a groundbreaking sometime yet this year. The mayor's youth council continues their work on their 2019 projects, which, of which the Bicycle Benefits Program and a Teen Movie Night were their two projects. The Teen Movie Night is intended to bring teens together and to invite teens to do something positive in their community, and it's held its planning meeting last week, and the vote was to continue to move forward with one movie night with a possible one later in the summer, one in June, sorry, and one possibly later in the summer, should the first one be successful. The Bicycle Benefits Project is also moving along as they're wrapping up their poll and survey on bike parking in areas and businesses around the city, and they will begin meeting on this project in April again. The beautification group continues their work on the, with the cultural center on the project of bringing public art to our parks. Just yesterday, referrals went back in front of the Parks and Rec Committee, Commission to continue their efforts from 2014, and eventually, at the next Park and Rec Committee meeting, to identify spaces where the art will be displayed. Aside from this project, they're also working on their regular spring and summer projects, of which the popular hanging flower baskets are currently being planned, planted and prepped, and some landscaping projects in our parks are also being considered. The formation of the, at the Parks and Rec Commission last night, again, the sculpture and public art was considered. The commission also discussed the Wayfinding Design Project, which aims to bring new signage and trail recognition to our parks and our trail system within our parks, and to promote greater use by the public. The airport acknowledge, reminds folks that a drone seminar has been set for April 13th for enthusiasts in conjunction with the EAA. So if anyone's interested in hearing more about drone regulations and rules, as well as how drones are used, feel free to sign up for a free seminar to take place April 13th out at the airport. The library received, recently received some very exciting news. Last week, they were named as a finalist for the National Medal for Museum and Library Services. This is the nation's highest honor for institutions that make significant innovative and exceptional contributions to our community. So we offer them our congratulations. The plans for the upstairs reconstruction renovation area are nearly finalized, so just a few more edits to be done with that design project at the library. Two more meetings are scheduled in April, so if you haven't attended one yet, I'd encourage you to think about any, attending any of these last few meetings. The final report will be released May 1st. I don't believe a funding source has been identified for those improvements, nor has a cost estimate been generated, but that's a project that will bring some new spaces to the library in the adult services area. On the East Grand Avenue Reconstruction Project, as we continue to engage with the state as an update on that project, we'll begin engaging with the businesses most directly affected by the reconstruction of East Grand Avenue. Encourage folks that are interested to check out the project information page on the city's website underneath the engineering department, which will talk about various stages, as well as the extent of that project. In the area of attended, hosted, or participated, held a couple of popular coffee with the mayor sessions, one on March 2nd at Dunkin' Donuts, which a number of residents came to discuss the Design to Pool project, as well as other community projects, to include housing projects that have been proposed or are underway in the city. Reminder of a couple of upcoming dates, March 27th at Grace's Family Restaurant in the Shopko Plaza 2 Strip Mall, April 10th at the Lowell Senior Center, and April 24th at the Chamber of Commerce. Also, held a number of interviews here at City Hall for some vacant positions pertaining to the GIS and multimedia coordinators positions, attended the Wisconsin League Lobby Day down in Madison, where we visited with our local representatives and other representatives around the state on various road and, and state funding for roads and city projects. And then participated with Adam, a leadership class bus tour, where we took a group of chamber leadership folks on a two-hour bus tour of all the various projects around town. Attended the legislative breakfast last week, where our state legislators were present in front of local business and, local business leaders about various, the proposals of the governor's budget and the impacts that the potential initiatives and additional funding might have to our city. Also attended the Economic Impact Summit of Pulp, Paper, and Converting Industries up at UWSP a few Fridays ago, and a couple of statistics from that I thought were worth mentioning, which brought together pulp, paper, and the like industries from around Wisconsin. The Wood County, it's no surprise, has the second highest concentration of pulp and paper producers of the 72 Wisconsin counties, and 10% of the Wood County GDP, the gross domestic product of Wood County, is from that industry. So we obviously know the dominance here to our city and to our tax base, but sometimes don't always see the comparison as it is statewide. There've also been wage improvements in that industry from 2014 to 2017, something that had been, from the period of 2000 to 2014, a lot of job losses as well as wage declines. There's actually been a positive uptick since that time. And just this morning, hosted the Project Search Group for Breakfast here in the first-floor city council, in the conference room, sorry, and that group is a school-to-work transition service for young adults with disabilities, which is supported in part by Aspiris. With that concludes my report. I'll move on to item number seven. Actually, a quick reminder to tune into my radio show, my monthly radio show tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM on WFHR. Taking my calls. Oh, sorry, I skipped the reading of the minutes. Thank you. We'll move back to item number five, a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is attachment number one in your packets. Older persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item seven now, new business. Item A is a second reading of the proposed ordinance, number 1249, changing the 15-mile residency requirement for cities' emergency personnel to 30 miles. See attachment number two in your packets. Older person Blazer?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
A motion by Blazer to adopt the ordinance. And we'll just get the computer to recognize the motion by Blazer.
You guys are good. Yep, you're good.
And we'll call for a second again for the record. Motion's to approve. Second by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve, as presented.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Item 7B is Consider a Resolution Number Five, amending the 2018 budget, attachment number three in your packets. Tim, did you want to speak to that at all?
Sure, this is kind of our annual housekeeping that we try to do quarterly for kind of revenues that aren't anticipated in the budget. A lot of them is for our revolving loan funds or if we get a special grant, and one is for the Clean Water Fund Loan Project, as we get those proceeds in and draw it on the loan, we appropriate that over to the expenditure account. So basically, what this resolution is doing is taking those anticipated, unanticipated revenues that we received in 2018 and appropriing them over to the expenditure account, and so then we have a track record of when we carry over those appropriations in our transfer resolution, or carryover resolution, excuse me, that we, we know exactly where it came from. So then, because usually these are for specified purposes, and we just kind of want that bookkeeping audit trail so that we can look back and determine when we got the revenue in and what we spent out of it.
Older person Graff, you're first.
Tim, I do have a question for you. If you look at the second page of the attachment, it's sale of city property. I don't remember seeing a sale of city property. Can you please elaborate on that? It's toward the bottom of the document.
Exactly. Basically, that was sale of a street department, not their capital equipment, but just items at the street department. So basically, what we're doing is we record their sale of city property, and I'm just appropriating that over into the fleet replacement account.
So just to be clear, it was the equipment that they got?
It's not land. It's just property of the city. Yes, it's items that they, they take stuff to auction periodically, clean out the garage.
Other requests to speak. Seeing no requests to speak, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Number Five, amending the 2018 budget.
A motion by Katna. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Move on to item 7C, Consider a Resolution Ratifying the Alexander Field Southwood County Airport Commission's Resolution Petitioning for Airport Improvement Aid, attachment number four. As a quick note on this item, the airport commission held its public hearing last week. There wasn't anyone present speaking in opposition. It's really a, an update of some of the items that we've previously sought support for. I think we've added, looking at the page there, it's, there was an additional item the state had asked us to clarify. Aircraft tug, I think, was one of them, as well as some of the hangar area improvements. And then the fuel system, there's a question of whether or not we will petition for that. So that's, basically, if we're going to petition for any state or federal aid, we have to account for that locally, and then it gets kicked up to the, to the DOT and the rest of the agencies for consideration for state and federal funding. With that, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Katna. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve, as presented. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Move on to 7D, Consider a Resolution to Initiate Discontinuance of Portion of East Commerce Drive Pursuant to 66.1003 Wisconsin Statutes, attachment number five. And I believe the Finance Committee had discussed this. Sue, did you have anything to mention on it? This is just?
Right, this is part of the, right, per the, the proposed development agreement with Metalko, the property that they're purchasing, we would then discontinue East Commerce Drive. This is just the first step of many. It needs to go to planning, needs to go to public works, has to be a public hearing, there's notice in the paper, and it eventually comes back to you, probably in May sometime. So there's, there's some time yet before this is final, but this is just the first step in initiating that discontinuance, and our development agreement, agreement does provide that, in the event that Metalko does not develop at all on the property, or does not develop that western, or I should say that eastern parcel, that then they would, the, the road portion would revert back to us, and then we would, we would have access to that other parcel, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion on the item?
I'll move to approve.
A motion to approve by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Katna. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, move into vote. The motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 7E is Consider an Industrial Service Agreement with Advanced Disposal Services for Leachate Disposal, attachment number six in your packets. This is very similar to the previous agreements that have been executed with Ocean Spray and Mariani, and this is the third of four, with Beeren being the fourth, I believe, that would be coming before the body at some point. Your older person Graff, floor is yours.
Joe, do you have a good knowledge of this contract? And the reason I'm asking is because I'm curious about the phosphorus and where that leaves us with the legislation around phosphorus discharge into the river?
Yeah, so, so any phosphorus that comes from this location isn't an issue, because the effluent right next door to it is from Ocean Spray, which is phosphorus deficient. And so, we have limits, however, in this agreement that are reasonable, and, but I guess, to answer your question, phosphorus from advanced, up and, up to the limit that is allowed in this proposed agreement complements the wastewater stream from Ocean Spray.
Is there a, I noticed that the testing for it is seven days a week, 24 hours a day, so you obviously have an automated meter that gives you an accurate reading from that test site?
So they're doing 24-hour composite samples.
That is currently there, or is that something that we need to add?
They need to add.
They need to add it? Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further requests to speak, I entertain a motion. A motion by Rayom. Is there a second? Second by Graff. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Or, sorry, cast your ballots, again, as a voice vote. I'd have this routine down by this item.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, 7F, Consider a Resolution Approving the Project Plan in Establishing the Boundaries For and the Creation of Tax Incremental District Number Eight, attachment number seven in your packets. And Phil from Ayers is here. Phil, you'd like to speak to the item here, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Phil Costin with Ayers. Nice to be back in Wisconsin Rapids. What I'd like to do, in your packet, you have a project plan, and I'd like to take a few minutes to walk through the project plan. Kind of catch you up on process. There are some of you that are relatively new to this process, and I know others have been through either creation or amendment of tax increment districts. So we'll start there. Procedurally, you're, you're on the tail end of this approval process now. We did have an organizational meeting of the Joint Review Board, and the Joint Review Board organizes and, for every tax increment district. So representative from the school, county, technical college, the city, and then a citizen member. They met March 4th, organized, and then were able to stay if they chose for the public hearing that was held by Plan Commission that night as well. So, March 4th, Plan Commission held a public hearing. I could tell you that we had no, nobody speak in favor or against the creation of the tax increment district, and Plan Commission unanimously approved the project plan. That brings it back to the council for your action tonight, and if you approve it, it goes back to the Joint Review Board for final action. They have scheduled their meeting for April 1st. So your step two of the approval needed three approvals to get through the process. So, the project plan, I know you have a full house here, and I'm going to try to keep this relatively short, is in your packet, and I'm going to take you through a few exhibits, talk a little bit in general terms about the tax increment district, and then, again, I can answer any questions that you have. The mayor already talked a little bit about the company, Metalko, and their commitment to the city. What they have guaranteed as part of the development agreement, and you'll see that in the project plan, is $8 million of taxable development. They're going to spend a great deal more than that to construct the facility and for the equipment that's inside the facility, but their commitment level is a minimum of $8 million value guarantee. And that's important because that is then guaranteed revenue that the city knows is coming in, and that you can essentially charge costs against. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about those costs. If you go into the project plan on page four, there is an executive summary, and that's a great deal of what I'm going to talk about is that executive summary. This will be what's called an industrial district, and industrial districts have the ability to stay open for up to 20 years. So the state law, what it allows for is a 20-year maximum life and/or, once you have collected enough revenue to pay off your obligations, you're required statutorily to close out the district. So this will be allowed up to 20 years. This is a relatively small district. It's for the Metalko property. It's four parcels. There are maps that are located in here. The four parcels are all owned by the city, so they currently have zero value to them. And the, this, these four parcels do overlay a portion of tax increment district number six. So years back, you created six, tid six for the industrial park. This is overlaying a portion of takes, tid number six. And the reason we're doing that is really kind of restart the clock, allowing for a longer collection period of revenue to be able to pay back the costs that are being identified in the project plan. We've estimated project costs up to $2.85 billion. There's really three segments to that. One is there's a rail spur that is needed to support the business. It's part of why the business is coming to, to Wisconsin Rapids. It's, it's the need for rail. That cost is estimated to be $600,000, of which the city's anticipating to get a $300,000 grant. So the city's TIF, through the TIF fund, what would be spent on the rail spur is $300,000. There's also direct development incentive that would be provided to Metalko through negotiation, that's identified at $1 million, of which $400,000 would be an upfront payment with $600,000 coming back over time out of the, coming out of the revenue that they generate from their new development. And then, if there is enough revenue that's being generated in the tax increment district, we're looking at the possibility of reconstructing or improving 48th Street North, which is a major thoroughfare coming in and out of the tax increment district. And over time, it's expected that there's going to be enough truck traffic in the area that that road may need to be improved. So in the project plan, we've accounted for the ability to take on that road project in a future date, if need be. As I've stated again, we're looking at $8 million of development. It's a, kind of a self-contained site, meaning we're not going to see additional development besides Metalko's first phase, and then potential subsequent phases that they may come back with if, if this site is successful. We are required as, per the statutes, to put together a lot of additional information in the, in the project plans. So we have a series of maps showing the location, showing the overlay of a portion of tax increment district number six. We show the project costs that I just went through with you, the development assumptions from Metalko, and then ultimately, a cash flow, and that cash flow for the entire district is found on page number 26. And the reason for the cash flow is that we need to provide an estimate to the other taxing bodies as to what we think the payback will be on the tax increment district. They are foregoing taxes on this site for the period of time the district is in place. So that's why they get a seat at the table and a vote. What we've identified of all the projects that I talked about, the rail spur, the development incentives, and 48th Street, all take place, we would expect this district to stay open for 16 years, four years short of that maximum life. So that's in the cash flow found on page 26. There are a series of other items that we need to cover in the project plan. I'm not going to sit here and read those to you, but they're really found on pages 27 and 28 of the plan. We deal with things like annexed property, how much of the tax increment district is going to be devoted to retail, obviously zero in this case, zoning ordinance chains, changes, how it, how it ties back to your master plan, are there any relocation costs, and a list of non-tid eligible projects. So all of those have been laid out in the project plan as well. But to hit the highlights, it's an industrial district. We're looking for $8 million in taxable development per the development agreement. The development costs related to this are about $2.85 billion, including the road. And the good news here is that even with all the costs identified, we're looking at a closure 16 years, four years short of the maximum life that's allowed under the tid law. So that's a, a very quick summary of the project plan. I don't mean to run through it real fast, but I, again, I know you have a full agenda tonight, and happy to answer any questions that you, you may have. I think there was, Mayor, there was a few questions that came from the Joint Review Board regarding, you know, level of pay, what type of jobs these are going to be. I didn't mention that. They're talking somewhere between 80 and 100 new jobs at this facility. The rate, rate of pay is, I think, pretty substantial when you, when you average production all the way up through management. So there is a substantial amount of commitment in the way of jobs as well.
Great. Questions for Phil? Older person Kubashak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a real quick question as far as the tid goes. In terms of borrowing, especially for the, the rail spur, when do we anticipate the rail spur being put in? Because obviously, they're going to want that day one, when it's turnkey, but we're going to have to look at financing methods to do that, right? Thank you.
Yeah, you know, that'll, that'll be played out a little bit by the, how quickly the facility gets built and their timing, and what we have identified in here would be late 2019, but it'll depend again on, on how quickly they, they get building out there. I could see that project maybe delaying maybe into 2020. And Adam, I don't know if you have something you'd like to add on that?
Just that we would start design now, so that we can get CN on board, as well as the T-grant submitted with, in this calendar year. But as Phil mentioned, it would depend on when they actually break ground, before we would actually send out for bidding construction.
And I believe the T-grant, the rail spur is eligible to be funded in what part by the T-grant? It's proposed in the tid plan as, as an expenditure, of course, but what's the T-grant cap? Is it $500,000?
It is $5,000 per job. So conceivably, it could go up to as high as $400,000. We have identified $300,000 based on some rough cost estimates.
Okay. Just want to make that clear of, of the portion that's identified in the tid plan. Other questions? Or comments from anybody? Okay. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
For being here again and sticking with us on this. You're our expert, and we are a trusted expert. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that resolution? And attachment number seven? Council members, what are your wishes regarding that resolution in attachment number seven?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Move on to discussion. Are there any further requests to speak? See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight i's, zero nays.
Thank you. Item G, consider scheduling a council meeting before the April 16th council reorganizational meeting. Now I'll ask Attorney Schill to just briefly explain this item here.
Right. So, we have elections coming up on April 2nd, and then that will be considered, those who are reelected, or if there's a new person, that's the new council, they are seated on April 21st, I believe? No, April 16th, which is the third Tuesday in April. So there will be a reorganizational meeting on April 16th, which would be the new council, those elected on April 2nd. So the question is, I know in past years, council members have wanted, because the committee, the standing committees are going to meet the first or second week in April, and they have certain things on their agenda, they want to be able to have the old council vote on those items before the new council is seated. And I realize that at the most might just be one member, so that might impact what you want to do. So we've done it a couple of different ways. We've had it where we haven't had a meeting other than the reorg meeting, and actually, the new council then just took up the matters from the standing committees earlier in that month. We've also done it where we've done a final old council meeting before that third Tuesday, like the week before or the day before, and then had the reorg meeting. So I'm not, I know, Tom, you've brought this up before, so I don't know if there's any interest in having an additional meeting to cover the items from the standing committees, or you just want that all taken care of by the new council on the third Tuesday in April?
I guess the floor is open to comments, discussion on that item, on the question of whether or not we want to hold a meeting before the reorganizational meeting. Alderperson Kuba-Shack, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess for the easiest type of decision-making process on this, I'd rather not have another meeting with all the meetings that we've been having. So that's my sentiment.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
I guess I'll keep it short and say I agree with that.
Any other comments for the good of the order? Okay. See no further requests to speak. Then, as it stands, the business of the April 2nd, or the standing committees on April 2nd, or whenever they meet, will be taken up then on the 16th at the reorganizational meeting unless there's some objection. I guess, do you have any consent or anything on it?
Well, no, I would think if someone wanted to have that meeting, we could have an additional meeting, we have a motion, but otherwise, they're basically not wanting to change the current schedule where it is going to be on the third Tuesday. So I don't think anything's necessary.
Alderperson Reom, you're next.
Just a question. You know, in the past, I have advocated that the old council take care of the old business. But would we have the reorg first and then take care of?
Well, right, because then...
We'd have to do it that way, wouldn't we?
Right, because everyone that's there on that day is going to be the new, the new. But, I mean, I guess you're going to still make those reports, and I would think the chairs, the former chairs would still read those reports. But, I mean, everything's coming to the council anyways.
That's fine.
And then probably after that, the mayor, you know, then you would vote on your, you know, do the further reorganizational things. I guess it doesn't really matter which order it's done in. I mean, you'll be sworn in right away at the beginning, so.
See no further requests to speak. Then we'll stand as is, as we just mentioned. We'll move on to item eight, is consideration for adoption, the action of the Planning Commission meeting at its March 4th meeting. And I'll just, yes, sir. Alderperson Kuba-Shack.
I don't know if I'm out of order. Before we go over to item eight, there was a gentleman who had called me about something that was in the minutes, but I'm trying to read through the minutes or not, and I don't know if that's out of order, if it's a case where someone from the audience wants to speak on behalf of, and it was about the solid waste ordinance. But again, I was trying to read through it, and I can't find where it is. But like...
For what?
Yeah, but it would have been in like last month's. All my days are together, so I don't, I don't know if that's out of order or not.
Right. I actually had talked to that gentleman before, and what I suggested is that, and I think he spoke with a few other persons, that if that item could be referred then by one of the other persons, if they believe it has merit back to Public Works, I'm not sure exactly what on the ordinance. But yeah, that ordinance has passed and is published and is in effect, so I would just wait probably till the end of the meeting, and then if an older person wants to pick up on his request and make a referral on it. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, thank you for clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item eight, so then the, get into the report, I think I've got it here. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on March 4th, 2019, here in the council chambers of City Hall. Members present included myself, Tom Bry, Shane Burkhart, Daniel Hanson, Sue Wesley, and Alderperson Kuba-Shack. Member absent was Lee Towel. Staff members present included Community Development Director Adam Tagan, Secretary Joe Terry, other officials in attendance, including Alderpersons Tom Reom and Scott Kellogg. Others in attendance are listed on the sign-in sheet. I believe it's in the minutes here. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one is approval of the report of the February 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Bry, second by Wesley, to approve the report from February 11th, 2019, the Planning Commission meeting, and that motion passed unanimously. Item two is maps and plaits received. There were no other maps or plaits received. Item three, a public hearing regarding the proposed project plan, boundaries and creation of tax incremental district number eight, which was included, there was a public hearing notice which was included, published on the 18th of February and February 25th. Public hearing was called to order at 4:06 PM. Speaking in favor was Phil Cosson of Aylers, describing the process and project plan. Speaking neutral was Bill Clendenning of Tonawarra Rapids, and there was no one present speaking against. Public hearing was closed at 4:22 PM. Item four was consideration of a resolution designating proposed project boundaries and approving a project plan for tax increment district number eight, City, Wisconsin Rapids. There was a motion and a second to approve the resolution designating proposed boundaries and approving a project plan for tax incremental district number eight, and that motion carried unanimously. Item five was a public hearing on Plan 190057, Premier of Wisconsin Rapids LLC. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the R3 multifamily medium-density residential district to R4 multifamily high-density residential district. The subject property is located adjacent to 3411 Washington Street. The public hearing was called to order at 4:26 PM. Speaking in favor was Chris Slater, President of Wisconsin Rapids LLC, who presented the project, and Scott Kellogg, 511 Elm Street. Speaking neutral, there was no one, speaking neutral and speaking against, was Mary Ann Michelle, 3411 Washington Ave, I think these all speak Washington Street, apartment 306. Mike Hittner, 981st Avenue South. Karen Steiner, 3411 Washington Street, apartment 102. And Jamie Ronituski, 3731 Washington Street. And then there was a written objection, which was included in the record. The public hearing was closed at 4:40 PM. Item six was action on Plan 190057, Premier of Wisconsin Rapids LLC. There was a motion and a second to approve the plan to rezone from R3 multifamily medium-density residential to R4 multifamily high-density residential district located adjacent to 3411 Washington Street. A roll call vote was requested, and in a roll call vote, Alderperson Kuba-Shack was voting in the negative. Burkhart was in affirmative. Bry in the affirmative. Hanson the affirmative. Wesley the affirmative, and myself was in abstention. The motion carried 4-1-1. Item seven, Plan 190058, Premier of Wisconsin Rapids LLC. The applicant is requesting site and architectural review for a proposed multifamily development. The subject property is located adjacent to 3411 Washington Street. There was a motion by Wesley, second by Hanson, to approve the site and architectural review for a proposed multifamily development located adjacent to 3411 Washington Street, consistent with the conditions recommended by staff as follows. Revision to the landscape plan to include additional landscaping adjacent to the paved areas onsite, consistent with the zoning code. A photometric plan shall be developed and submitted to staff for approval, for review and approval, in accordance with 18, sorry, Article 18 of the zoning code. Item three was compliance with all other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried 5-1. Item eight was an update and discussion on the update to the sign ordinance with Civitech, in which an update on the sign ordinance project and a discussion regarding the current sign ordinance and potential changes was held with Civitech. And item nine was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously, and that meeting adjourned at 5:56 PM. And important to note, as we just passed with our last zoning code, that all evidence was presented and then acted upon following the, or through the public hearing process and concluded at that Planning Commission meeting. So with that, I'd look for a vote on the Planning Commission minutes. Sorry, a motion, did I say vote? A motion, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission's meeting minutes.
We have a motion by Katna. Call for a second now that the system's ready. Second by Kellogg. We'll move into discussion. Alderperson Graff, you're first.
I would like to hold out six and seven.
Call for unanimous consent. Is there any objection to holding out items six and seven from the packet? Hearing no objection, those items will be held out. So that leaves the balance of the report. Are there any additional requests to speak? Do you need to enter that? Okay. All right. We'll move into a vote. The motion is to approve with the exceptions of items six and seven. You can read them. For the record, do you want it to reflect in the affirmative? Okay. We'll get that for the record.
Motion carried. Eight i's, zero nays.
All right. That leaves items six and seven from item number eight. Alderperson Graff, you're first.
Adam, if you can, can you please explain R2, R3, and R4 districts for us, just for the viewing audience, please?
So, R2 is called mixed residential. Basically, that particular residential district is targeted towards single and two-family residential are the main uses that are permitted by right within the R2 district. There are also other uses, obviously, that fall in there, but primarily, that is the intent of the R2 district. Within the R3 district, that's considered multifamily. So that allows, in addition to a two-family residential, that allows multifamily, being a definition of more than three units within a building. However, that does cap out at eight units per building. But there is an overall density of one dwelling unit per 3,000 square feet within the R3 district. So for example, on a one-acre lot, which is about 43,000 square feet, you would be allowed, you divide that by three, so that would be about 14 units. The R4 district is also multifamily. It has the same overall density, again, that one dwelling unit per 3,000 square feet. However, the high density that is referenced in the title for the zoning district, that actually references the type of building. So the main difference between the R3 and the R4 district is that you can have up to 16 units per building versus the eight units per building that's allowed in the R3. But again, through a rezoning such as this, you're not increasing the allowable density, just the allowable type of building.
Just to be clear, what is the allowable type of building that you're in reference to?
So, I guess it would be the number of units that are within one contained building. So for example, if you're familiar with the area, in the general area where this is located, you have the senior housing, which is, most of those are like a four-unit or a six-unit, so there's four or six units contained under one roof. A Swidersky type of development, which would be to the north, I believe those are 16 units in one building. Again, that would now require the R4 district, whereas the senior would be allowed in the R3 district. What is being proposed by the developer is 12-unit buildings. So again, 12 units under one roof. And so that is the requirement for, or why they are requesting this rezoning. But again, it's not a density question.
Just for clarification, so it's not a density issue, the, no matter what, between R3 and R4, it's the same amount of apartment buildings, it's just what's encapsulated under one roof? R3 is only eight max? R4, they could have up to 12?
Correct. Yeah, so the total number of units does not change, meaning they're proposing 48 total units. Within the R3 district, which is what it's owned today, they could put 48 units on that site. They would just have to be eight-unit buildings. They want to do 12-unit buildings, four of them for the 48 units. So again, that's the reason for the rezoning.
Alderperson Kuba-Shack, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give a quick, a quick, brief explanation why I voted no. Someone asked me, and I said, all right, I'll clarify. The reason why I voted no on Plan Commission was, and it's, I, it's kind of interesting because being a union ironworker, I've been accused of being anti-business in town. And I'm not anti-business. I'm pro-resident, and I'm pro-resident of the people that are currently living here and that have lived here for a while. And when I see a large number of people come to a hearing, that promotes me to want to be pro-resident. And again, it's not that I'm anti-business in terms of development and whatever else, but it's one of those where I want to make sure that I listen to the residents that we have now, because I don't know if we're going to have residents coming for this. I assume you build it, they'll come type of a thing, but in my purview of public administration, the current residents are more important than the future residents. So that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Are there further requests to speak? Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
At the hearing, I spoke in favor of this project, and I spoke in favor as a citizen, but now I'm speaking in favor as an alderman. I've been involved with two hearings with regard to two multifamily complexes that, in my opinion, should have been voted through. But a few residents showed up, and it seems to me, we need multifamily residences, but in somebody else's neighborhood. That's the mindset that we have. And I think we should listen to the people that live in that community. But when you make a plan, you can also make it conditional. You can determine the number of berms, the distance from the sidewalks, the exit onto what street. I mean, there's so many conditionals that hopefully would address the needs for those particular people. And in the last two years, a year and a half, I've been involved with a committee from the Housing Health Department, and they're going to be publishing a report in probably six months or eight months, or whenever they republish it. So, when I met at that hearing, I gave this information, since if you didn't attend, I just want to give it to you. It's really relatively short. But there were 15 people on this health committee project that I was telling you about. And the median household income in Wisconsin Rapids is $38,322 compared to $51,603 in Wood County overall. And we need more affordable housing. Our housing stock is aging and so forth. In Wisconsin Rapids Housing Study in 2016, 32% of the respondents stated they know someone who's struggling with housing costs and... that they know someone who's struggling with housing costs and may be danger of becoming homeless. In the Encouraged Community Foundation, this is in 2017, 49% of the residents said increased access to quality, affordable housing is a very important priority for the future of the community, and in addition, 38% of the residents said it was somewhat important. So totally, that would be 87%. Then the Encouraged Community Foundation in 2017 study, 45% of the residents said increased access to affordable housing is a very important priority for the future of the community, and an additional 42% of the residents said it was somewhat important. Again, totally, those two would be 87%. The Wisconsin Rapids study, the need for quality and additional housing opportunities for both homeowners and also renters. And then the research for good health, a healthy community, is research affects that affordable, quality housing, more resources for other needs such as healthcare, healthy food, and transportation. Increase in financial security and safety decreases stress, and also improves the healthy outcomes. The most appropriate location is a response, is, and a responsibility of experienced developer. I mean, this location has multiple families on the north of it, multiple families on the west of it, multiple families on the south of it. It is a perfect location. It's not planted in the residential area, single-family homes. And, and the developer has had 15, according to the information, I think it was 15 states and has 15,000 units or something like that. I might be wrong on that statistics, but it's not their first rodeo, and they're going to have an office right in that complex to deal with any issues that could surface. And it's not an absentee landlord, and we need these new quality homes. And my point basically is, if this development is not approved, then what development would be approved? I mean, it's just perfect for that location, in my opinion. And if this development is not approved now, then when, and when will we create these developments? Because in our research, we're finding we need them. I don't know, maybe, Adam, if you could speak more about the Wisconsin Rapids study, and how the aging homes and so forth, or why we need, we actually need probably two more developments outside of this one. I don't know. Can you speak to it?
Sure. I'm just bringing up my housing study, so I get the numbers right this time. As some of you are aware, in the course of 2015, the city completed a housing study and needs analysis to try and determine what the current state of housing is and what the future needs of housing were. Within that study, albeit it's already aging and needs to be updated in the next couple of years, but in that study, over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, that recommended a low of around 130 units to a high of approximately 180 units of just multifamily housing in apartments, which would be this style. It recommended an additional, again, low end of around 80, high end of about 110 town home-style development, and that would be similar to the Cranberry Creek townhomes that were just recently constructed, and then also the establishment of additional single-family homes. And again, that ranged from on the low end of around 160 to a high end of approximately 250. So those were the recommendations of the housing study, basically targeting that although we have housing within the city, obviously, there is a need for new housing. The other item that I would note is the vast majority of housing within the city is pre-1970, because we are an older community, so new housing, quality housing is also a need and a recommendation for the housing study.
And I guess one of the concerns I have, when you talk about Reggie and economic development, we have Metalco, how are we going to attract new companies to Wisconsin? I have friends that live, I mean, that work in Wisconsin Rapids, live in Plover, spend their money in Plover, live in other communities, Marshfield, whatever, because we don't have the housing that they want in this particular city. So it seems to me this is a perfect development, like I say, surrounded by other multifamilies, it's not linked, plopped in the middle of a residential area, and if we don't approve this, and we have the need for more housing, and we're going to attract more business, that's what we keep talking about, and we do have a fantastic company coming in, then when are we going to get this housing? And I say now, and that's why I, I'm strongly in favor of it. And I understand concerns people have, but they can be addressed with the developer. So.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
Well, I started out disagreeing with Mr. Kellogg, because we can talk about 17th Avenue, and that's done and over with. However, I do agree that this is the ideal location for use of this land. The reason why I pushed my button to speak, though, was I wanted to ask Alderman Kubashak, and I have to apologize because I was not, I did not get a chance to view this meeting. I did take a phone call of a message that left regarding safety concerns with this project, and I guess I'm kind of curious as to the other people that were speaking against it, what their concern was, but I do agree with Mr. Kellogg that if we're not going to use this piece of, or allow this use for this piece of land, then I don't know what we're going to do with it then, because it's, it fits in with the use of the area. Thank you.
So, I-
I guess I'm more curious, what are the safety concerns? Is it traffic, crime, all of the above, or what that discussion was?
I guess since the question was posed to me, I will initiate discussion on this, but I don't, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, although I do believe that there may be at least one person in the attendance that could speak to that, if that's possible. I'll, I'll, it, it can be, or it can't be, or people, they can't, I'm sorry. In terms of a public hearing, what we had before was evidence being produced, but if it's to rehear the same evidence, is that allowable or not? I, I'm just-
No. And, and we're kind of veering into, by your statements, you're kind of veering into testimony and, and evidence yourselves, so I guess I would just caution you on, on that.
I withdraw my question, and I do, I do believe that, I agree with Mr. Kellogg.
Okay. We'll move on to Alderperson Coth, I think you're, sorry, Alderperson Katna, then Coth.
Thank you. I'm also strongly in favor of this, I was strongly in favor of the previous project for all the reasons Alderperson Kellogg stated. We need, we have a need for growth, we are growing, and we need places for these folks to live. I know I got friends who are looking at moving back to the area, and when they come, take a look at the apartment housing or the housing available for rent specifically, that they end up choosing to move to Plover or other areas, just because of a lack of quality or, or lack of quantity. And so I, I think this is a need, I think, as has been stated, it's a perfect spot, and so I am also strongly in favor of this.
Alderperson Coth, you're next.
I know we can still continue discussion, but I was just going to put a motion on the floor to approve items six and seven from the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Katna. Is there any further? Alderperson Graff, you're next.
I will actually speak on this, and I'll try to make this quick for everybody that's out in the crowd and people listening at home, and also for other aldermen. What I heard, let me start out this way. So I went to, I worked, went to a seminar with USDA. USDA has programs available for single-family homes as well as high-capacity apartment buildings. The one thing that I had concerted my concern about was the fact that our housing market, it is, it is aging, but are you going to come work in Wisconsin Rapids and live in an apartment building? What I'm interested in, and which is what USDA is, actually has available, is single-family homes, upgrading single-family homes and such like that. So we talk about aging housing, we talk about affordable housing, but we never talk about keeping families here, so that's my issue. My issue is, we want people to come and work in Rapids and stay in Rapids and not come to live in an apartment, and then do what? Leave? I mean, the promotion of more apartment buildings, and it's funny, because I actually called Swiderski just to make sure that my facts were straight, and they have vacancies right now. We have plenty of hard housing, no different than any time I have ever made a statement about housing, is I actually agree with increased housing, but I agree with single-family increased housing and promote a community feel, not necessarily shop at your local, you know, apartment buildings and that kind of stuff. The other concern, and I will speak for Mr. Blazer on Mr. Blazer's comment about public safety, is we had went through this with the 17th Avenue development, in which I had asked various people in the community about safety and amount of calls that the police department yields in high-capacity apartment buildings. Obviously, that raises a concern, and I'm asking the council, is if that, if we are willing to increase the amount of high-capacity apartment buildings, are we willing to increase the amount of police officers that we have in the community? We can't keep putting apartment buildings, the one on Two Mile, the one on 16 Streets, Swiderski on the west side of town, all the development around 48th Street and Washington Street and everything like that, but where are the subdivisions? Where are, the reason people go to Plover is because they have built up single-family, nice, quality, good, single-family homes, it, zero-lot line duplexes, stuff like this that is another way to look at housing, not necessarily from a high-capacity, high-density apartment building-type structure. So I do think that we do need housing in the community, I do think we need quality housing in the community, but my question is, no different than the $50,000, and I want to make sure that I'm clear, Zach, it was $50,000 that we put into that for Reggie for housing development, right? I'm sorry, maybe I'll ask Adam, it was-
Reggie? There was no-
We took, I apologize, it was pilot money, we took pilot money, and we moved it into an account for housing.
Oh, you're talking about the Rapids rediscovered, $40,000 was-
It was 40, and I, okay, that's why I just wanted to-
I wasn't sure what you were talking about.
Yeah, I apologize. So there again, I, and no different than the concerns I made to Reggie, is I have absolutely no problem with more housing in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. It's the type of housing that we need to be looking for and the type of community we want to have. And for this, these exact reasons, I would be more than willing to sit here and debate all night about my side of the story, but for that reason, I will be voting no against this.
Was there a question, Alderperson Graff, you wanted to address in the single-family housing, the redevelopment project with the program that the council approved? Was there a question about that?
I just wanted to make the statement, no different than what I did when we talked to Reggie, is that we approved that money to go into development for housing, but it, in, no different than the statement I'm making right now, is it's the type of housing that we're talking about, not the high-capacity apartment buildings in which that money should be used for. It should be more for the zero-lot line duplexes, the nicer community feel subdivisions that we were going to look into, whether it be strategically on the south side of the Wisconsin Rapids, west side of Rapids, east side of Rapids, north side of Rapids. That's the only reason I commented on that, because I made the exact same statements during that as I am making now.
Thank you. Alderperson Kellogg.
I somewhat agree with, with regard to single-family homes, and this has been a concern for, that I've had, but in any of our districts, we have some bladed homes, substandard homes, and that's why we passed the Wisconsin Rapids Rediscover. And that's under, we're, we're working on that with the county, and so that hopefully can address the needs. But in this particular house, this particular development, the rental is market rate. It's not subs, you know, it's not low income, it's $1,000 a month, and when you look at the amenities to this particular complex, you're going to have professionals, semi-professionals, or whomever, that I don't believe that that would add any problem for extra law enforcement and things like that in that particular area. And so, again, if you look at, otherwise, we have these studies, and why do the studies? And if the studies reflect, people still will be not living here, and you're going to have a hard time, we're going to have a hard time, attracting businesses like we have attracted now. So basically, I just wanted to tell you the, the scope of the type of development this one particular one is.
Alderperson Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will keep this short. I agree with what the comments that Lee has said, and I am going to vote against, against these two items that we have here, six and seven. Alderperson Kellogg has stated, there's true, there is a truth to that, but I have to go back to what Alderperson Kubashak's had to say, and that's about the people there have voiced their opinion and have fears of what it may be, they don't like it, they don't want it, I guess, based, whatever, to all use, they did speak at the public hearing. And as I said, I'll keep this short and not, that Lee, not to repeat what he said, but I do agree with, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak. The motion is to approve items six and seven, and just as a point of order, item seven has actually been, that's a, the Planning Commission has final authority in that item, so item six is really the item, so for, for a formality, we'll be adopting item seven as part of whatever action is ultimately taken. Please cast your ballots. Mary Ann, the, the public hearing, as I think I indicated to you on the phone, was held the other day at the Planning Commission meeting, so tonight, there wouldn't have been a means for any additional comment to the, to the body. Thank you.
Motion carried five i's, three n's.
Item number nine, consider for adoption, the actions of the standing committees of the common council as follows. So item nine A, the Finance and Property Committee, so I'll go to Alderperson Zerflu.
Thank you, Your Honor, there are two reports today. Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 5, 2019, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Also in attendance, Alderperson Graff, Rayom, Kellogg, Adam Tagan, Jennifer Gosick, Brian Lindowski, and Tim DeSorci. A list of others in attendance is on file in the Clerk's office. Item number two, review and consider for approval a contract not to exceed $12,000 from Omni Resources Incorporated to conduct an IT environment assessment and assist in determining information technology priorities. There was a motion and a second to develop a request for proposal for an IT assessment upon the hiring of the open IT lead position. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, review and approve release of the request for proposals for recreational and downtown wayfinding signage designs. There was a motion and a second to approve a request for proposal for recreational and downtown wayfinding signage designs. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and consider for approval a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Rafters that they be permitted to install a concrete pad for a new walk-in cooler and install asphalt in the picnic area at the Rafters' expense. Per the lease agreement, any improvements exceeding $10,000 need to be approved by the Finance Property Committee. There was a motion and a second to approve the request from Wisconsin Rapids Rafters to install the concrete pad for the new walk-in freezer and the asphalt in the picnic area at the Rafters' expense. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five, consider for approval Resolution Number Five, amending the 2018 budget. There was a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number Five, amending the 2018 budget. That motion carried unanimously. Item number six, consider for approval a Class B liquor license application and a Class B beer license application for Houdini's LLC, James Conley Agent, doing business as Houdini's, for the premises located at 2010 Chestnut Street. There was a motion and a second to approve the Class B liquor license application and Class B beer license application for Houdini's. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, consider for approval a Class B liquor license application and Class B beer license application for Aaron's Wines &amp; Steins LLC, Aaron Jennings Agent, doing business as Aaron's Wines &amp; Steins, for the premises located at 161st Street North. There was a motion and a second to approve the Class B liquor license- There was a motion and a second to approve the Class B liquor license and Class B beer license application for Aaron's Wines &amp; Steins. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, consider for approval, a temporary Class B beer license application for Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Incorporated, Angel Whitehead President, for a business after-hours event at Our House Senior Living, 2941 Sixteenth Street South, on March 11, 2019. There was a motion and a second to approve the temporary Class B beer license application for Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Incorporated, Angel Whitehead President, for a business after-hours event at Our House Senior Living. That motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, consider for approval, a temporary Class B beer license and Class B wine application for Friends of Rapids Music, Connie Tomsky-Faville President, for Friends of Rapids Music Festival, Robinson Park, on June 22, 2019. There was a motion and a second to approve the temporary Class B beer license and a Class B wine application for Friends of Rapids Music. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 10, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check numbers 75654 through 76055, and manual checks 66016 through 66031. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 11, beverage operators licenses. There was a motion and a second to approve beverage operators licenses on file in the clerk's office. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 11, set next meeting date. The next meeting of the Finance Property Committee will be Tuesday, April 2, 2019, at 5:00 PM. Should be noted, that's a regular meeting. Item number 12 is adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 5:40 PM, and I'll make a motion to approve the report.
I've motioned to approve the first report by Zerflu and a second by Katna. Alder Person Graff, you're first.
I would like to actually hold out item three.
We have a request to hold item three out, is there, a call for unanimous consent, is there any objection to holding out item number three? Seeing no objection, we'll hold out item number three, so that'll leave the balance of the report. Alder Person Rayom, you're next.
Just to comment on number eight, and maybe I'm, I commented a question with that, I guess, and it has to do with the beer license. I don't have a problem that we did it, and I know that action was taken at the committee before this event took place, but yet it doesn't come to the council till after the event takes place. As long as it's legal, I'm okay with it, but we're just approving it tonight, and it, you know...
The committee's a final authority, right?
And I understand things do get put in late at times, but yet, it, that, it's just, I don't have a problem that we did it, but the dates, we're not approving the minutes until this evening. And I guess the question would be, does the committee have the authority that they could okay that, to do that for us?
Well, actually, the clerk does have the authority to approve recurring, a license for someone, and a recurring event or a similar event, as, if there isn't enough time before the event. We're trying to get people to get them in sooner, and when there is time, at least to take it to finance, we've been taking to finance, and then the clerk's been issuing it, so I think it's, the alternative would be that the clerk would just sign it and no one would see it. So I guess we're, we're treating it as if there's at least time to take it to finance to approve, but, but actually, the clerk could, could approve this without any further approvals from the committee.
So thanks to Connie out there for getting her application in early, ample time before the June 22 event out there, Connie, you're on the ball. Move on to Alder Person Kubisak, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick on that, Mr. Rayom, too, is that it, it won't ever affect us, we're not liable for that, it's the organizations themselves. So if the Department of Revenue comes down and cites them, and they say, hey, you know, we didn't get it in, in time, that's not the council's problem or the city's problem, so...
Are there any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak. Motion is to approve with the exception of item number three, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried eight ayes, zero nays.
Item number three, which is the review and approval of release of the request for proposals for recreational and downtown wayfinding signage designs. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Graff, you're first.
Yeah, I, I spoke about this at the Finance and Property meeting, and I want to make sure that we're not doing this, okay? So the idea of this was to send a proposal to have designs for signs made up, when I feel that we have people on staff that actually make signs, because it's a sign department, and I feel that they can design whatever is appropriate and come up to us with a few designs. I don't necessarily think we have to send this out, and the reason I held it out is because I think it's bad practice that we send out a request for a proposal and then turn around and not do it that way anyway. I think it's just bad business for the, for us as the city to ask for people to submit proposals and then turn around and pull it out anyway, because it would be my intent to have our own people design it. And the main reason I had for that is last week, I was actually in Miami, and anywhere from southeastern Florida to southwestern Florida, so I paid especially careful attention to all the different signs, because through the Everglades, they have all kinds of recreational parks and trails and everything else, and they're pretty simple. I don't see any heartache over the design for a sign when, I, I still think we pay people to do this, and I don't think that it would be proper for us to send out a request for a proposal when I think our guys should do it.
Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
Yeah, I did make the motion to approve the request, but I, I agree. I, I'm kind of curious, and I'd be interested in seeing what our staff could do for sign proposals before we do a request. Just my thoughts.
Alder Person Kubisak, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, can I have clarification on this? I apologize that I did not make this meeting, or I didn't make the, the subsequent Finance Committee meeting, but can I, I, I know nothing about this, and with having discussion on this, to be able to make rational decision, I'd like to have that. So whoever could further explain what this is, that'd be great, thank you.
And I just want to draw your attention to the referral and supporting information, I'm just trying to find my iPads, kind of slow here to figure out what page it's on in our packets. 120, 125, it looks like? And so I'll just, for the benefit of everyone, I'll reread the, I'll reread the referral. Review and approve, the request is to review and approve release of a request for proposals for recreational and downtown wayfinding signage. Background with updates to parks and bike networks within the city, there's become an apparent need for new signage for these areas, as well as a consistent theme among the signs to better promote the city's amenities. In addition, the age of existing wayfinding signage within the downtown and thoroughfare or other areas of the city is in need of updating and replacement. And I'll note that all the city's wayfinding signs were removed in the last year and a half by the city's sign shop. The RFP would select a firm to perform design work to develop the various types of signs and the consistent look that would be shared among them. Examples would be bike path signs, park entrance signs, downtown parking signs, and wayfinding signs. Options available are to release the RFP or choose not to move forward with the project, and the staff recommendation was approve the release of the RFP, with the understanding that approval of a proposal will come back before the committee and the council. The action staff was requesting was the approval of the RFP for recreational wayfinding signage designs. And then the question about funding, the amount of funding is unknown until the proposals are received, and then, to date, and was noted by the Public Works Superintendent last fall, and I found my minute or my notes from that meeting, since I didn't have them at the Finance Committee meeting, was, it was a statement that there was a street department and park and rec outlay budget for sign updates could be available, and then there was a mention that carryover funds from 2018 may be utilized if additional funding is required. So that's the referral, and then the RFP follows. I will not read the RFP, I'll spare you all of that, because I hope that you all took a chance, or took a minute to read the RFP. Joe, do you want to respond to the sign shop capacity question and capability related to design?
Sure, and, and so I think it's important to understand the concept of what's being proposed here. If you recollect, in most of our parks, we had a wooden, a brown wooden sign with a routered, simple letters that were painted yellow, simple, you know, similar to a lot of the old county-type signs. Those have rotted and have fallen apart, you know, so we're looking for something that, that has some consistent graphics and can be used for multiple locations. As far as our staff's capabilities, another example, the downtown wayfinding signs that have since been removed, our city staff didn't do the design of the top part of those, the graphic part. We contracted that work done. We put the lettering on as far as the actual, you know, the lettering and the arrows. Our staff is, is capable of, of street signs, you know, normal traffic signs, and then lettering on signs. So if we have a parking lot sign, for example, that has the Wisconsin Rapids Splash logo on it, we'll have someone else do the logo part of that sign, leave the bottom blank, and, and we'll perform that work. So we're not set up to do graphics art design, nor are we set up to do, you know, develop or, or actually make signs that have a graphic art portion of it. So, you know, this project is to get ideas, or proposals for ideas for that, that graphic artist component, so that we can have some similarities between our, our downtown wayfinding, our, our bicycle areas, our parks, to evaluate that, and then, when it comes time to order signs and make signs, I would anticipate that there will be, you know, we may order blanks from a vendor, maybe a local sign shop, that has the graphics portions on, and then we may do the lettering itself. I'm not sure if that helps kind of paint the picture of, of what our capabilities are, but to make something that's effective, other than a simple green sign with lettering on it, we would need to get some outside assistance.
Adam, did you want, I was going to ask if you had anything to add to your question, Alder Person Kubisak, if there's anything, or if Joe covered.
You want me first, or?
No, no, I was just wondering if you had anything to add based upon Alder Person Kubisak's question.
Real quick, just to add to that, and as far as with, from hearing that this is kind of more of a project-type of a thing, interestingly enough, Mr. Kellogg, at the last Public Works Committee meeting, regular Public Works Committee meeting, not the special one, talked with us about a particular venture that UWSP had with our downtown, I'm sorry, not downtown, with our A Street corridor, and how wonderful, and it was crazy how, how Mr. Kellogg's face lit up when he was talking about this, and I wish I would have been invited to that, because I think that I would have really been excited about that. And it, it isn't necessarily in terms of sending out an RFP for, for firms to do it, and again, is that anti-business type of thing, but I'd love to see a collaborative project like that, if we could have the UWSP program or whatever economic development or something that we can work with, and then parlay that with our, our sign shop as well. And if we did order blanks and with a template on there, that's fine, we got to do it anyway, but instead of having a professional firm do that, having kind of a personal touch with, and I, obviously, I'm biased, because I, I teach class as well as continuing my education, it seems, all the time, but it's, it's something where that's, this, this type of experience in, in a classroom, especially maybe even a grad program, is priceless for the students in that class, and it can definitely benefit our community as well. And like I said, it, it, I, when Mr. Kellogg had talked about that previously, all the different possibilities that we could have for different college programs, whether it's at the tech school, whether it's at the university, doing this instead of having, you know, some firm that may not have that, that, I guess, local touch with that. So I, there's my, that's my two cents with this, so thank you.
Thank you. Adam, did you want to speak at all, and we've got some other folks in the speaking order if you didn't want...
No, I, the only other thing I will add is, in addition to a design study, this is also so that it would bring, it would basically create the specifications for the different types of signs. So in addition to the artistic layout of it, it would also be looking at what materials are appropriate, what size, density, all those type of things, so if and when the city decide to move forward with creating those signs, all that work would be done so that we could just send that out to a sign vendor, and we would know exactly what we're getting.
And I would just offer, in the scope of work in the RFP, one of the components that will require a lot of work between perhaps our GIS folks, engineering, park staff, as well as maybe some outreach on boots on the ground, will be identifying locations and the routes for these types of things. I, I don't see it quite specified to that extent, that the firm will do that, that that's actually an item, there's a, there's a lot more additional work that administratively will need to happen in order for the project to get underway. So I just want to draw your attention to that scope of work, because it's, I believe it's quite narrow, I don't think it's, it's, we're not asking for them to come in and solve our problems, it's, we need someone to help with the design portion of it, and then the specifications, as Adam just mentioned, and then we, we proceed with where we want these, and, and, you know, we're going to install them and all that sort of thing. So, Joe, did you have anything additional?
Yeah, I was just going to mention with requests for proposals, you know, we could solicit the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point to submit a proposal as well through the graduate program, and there's, there's nothing here that would exclude anyone from submitting a proposal.
Exactly. Yeah. We'll move down our speaking order, and then staff can weigh in if there's other questions. Alder Person Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Thad, for reminding me, Alder Person Kellogg, when he did talk about it that evening, he, his eyes did light up with that, and, but thank... My comment at first was, and is going to be just that, I happened to go to the park and rec last night, and they had an item on the agenda, number seven on theirs, and that is introduction of recreational wayfinding projects, and I, the reason I wanted to just comment on that is that we're talking about RFP and everything else, and yet, and, you know, signage, and which would include directions to parks, or whatever we, however it ends up to be, but here, Park and Rec was just getting this last night as an introduction to this, and we're, it seems like they missed the train, maybe, that the thing's already been put into motion, and now it's to try to catch them up in, catch them up to where we're going, and yet Park and Rec, you know, signage for that is a big, is a big thing. So it seems that the discussion that took place was fine and great and that, but it just seems that it came somewhat after the fact. We haven't done anything yet, but it seems that they are kept trying, that we're now trying to catch them up to what we're, we're talking about, so, thank you.
Joe, you said you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on that. So, so there are multiple parts to this. This, the objective of this requesting proposals is to essentially create a menu of sign choices that are appropriate for various locations. The Parks Project is to identify the locations, and, and when, whether it's Parks Wayfinding or other wayfinding, when it's determined that these are appropriate locations for these types of signs, this scope identifies, here's our menu that we would select, you know, we'll, we'll select these signs for our bike trail and these signs for our parks' entrance areas based on the park. So it, it really is two separate items, and it's appropriate to look at them separately.
Alder Person Katna, you're next.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. So the one thing I would just say, I think our parks and trails are one of our biggest assets in the community. I, I think investing in them a little to make them look nice is a great idea, and this is only opening up ideas for that, it's not necessarily we're, we're spending the money right now. I know we could do street signs, it sounds like that's what our sign shop will be capable of, but I feel like with the, the beauty we have in our parks and trails, they need a little more spice than necessarily a street sign, and, and the fact that we've gone a year and a half, to me, is, is long enough, so I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this, I hope we can see this go through and hopefully get some nice signs out there.
Alder Person Kellogg, you're next.
Just to capsulize what I said at Public Works, Stevens Point had a project where they call it a capstone project, where students are involved with urban and development and so forth, and they took A Street as a capstone project, and they had approximately four or five groups that came into Wisconsin Rapids from different locations to get their impression of Wisconsin Rapids, and then they... And then they, um, at this meeting, I was impressed, they had, maybe I'm exaggerating, but forty, maybe forty or fifty students from different levels, from freshman, junior, and so forth, and the seniors took charge of the discussion at the tables, and hopefully from that project, they'll come to Wisconsin Rapids with some recommendations. But on the, uh, on the point with regard to signage, um, I remember I was part of a group, it might have been from the Convention Visitors Bureau, um, and possibly the Mayor's Beautification, but we looked at entrance signs, and we have some beautiful entrance signs that we have now, three of them, and hopefully a fourth one in the future. And that was from, most of the, we looked and explored what's on the website. None of this is new, and it seems to me, maybe, uh, a group, maybe a representative from, uh, Convention Visitors Bureau, maybe from the Youth Council, um, maybe from, uh, another part of our organization, um, if it's beautification, to sit down and look up from the websites, what are, what are different companies and businesses putting out there, and from that you maybe glean, uh, a Wisconsin Rapids concept, and that might save a lot of time for our people, our people, um, that are working in, as staff, and then propose it to the staff, and see if that's of their interest, or to the common council, does that make sense? But then we would have our fingerprints on it, and it's just an interesting concept of maybe doing it in-house that way, and then maybe some of it has to be printed from outside. But, um, we did a great job on the entrances to Wisconsin Rapids, and might this be another, and might be a great project to engage different groups that we have, you know, in our community to embark on this project. Doesn't have to be done overnight.
Thank you. Alderperson Coth?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item three of the Property and Finance Committee.
We have a motion by Coth to approve, is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Any further discussion? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve as presented. Please cast your ballots. Oh, we got a tiebreaker. Well, this is an easy one. Thanks for that.
Motion carried, five ayes, four nays.
Uh, item nine B, Finance and Property Committee meeting held March 14th. Alderperson Zerflu, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Your Honor. The Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Thursday, March 14th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, except Alderperson Blazer was excused, and Alderperson Scott Kellogg sat in for him. Alderperson Rayom was also in attendance. Item number two, presentation by Matalco. Robert Rossetti and Mark D'Souza from Matalco, along with Mark Weeks and Cheryl Ann Whitmore from OBG, provided an overview of the project. Item number three, an open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in the affirmative. In closed session, the committee will discuss negotiations and strategy regarding, one, a purchase and sale agreement for parcels thirty-four dash zero-nine-eight-six-one and thirty-four dash zero-nine-eight-six-three between the city and Matalco Incorporated. Two, a development agreement between the city and Matalco Incorporated. Three, an existing development agreement between the city and Encourage Community Foundation. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and strategy regarding the Matalco project and the existing development agreement with Encourage. The committee will return to open session. There was a motion and a second to return to open session, a roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative. Item number four, review and consider approval of a purchase and sale agreement for parcels thirty-four dash zero-nine-eight-six-one and thirty-four dash zero-nine-eight-six-three between the city and Matalco Incorporated. There was a motion and a second to approve the purchase and sale agreement for said parcels between the city and Matalco as presented. That motion carried unanimously. Item five, review and consider approval of a development agreement between the city and Matalco Incorporated. There was a motion and a second to approve the development agreement between the city and Matalco as presented. That motion carried unanimously. Item number six, overview of next steps and process moving forward for the Matalco Incorporated, Incorporated development. Adam Tagan provided a quick summary of the permitting process, including receiving the necessary air permits from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources prior to the start of any construction. Item number seven, consider financing options, bid letting and schedule related to the community development, investment grant, and Third Avenue South. Mayor Ruwink provided an overview of the CDI grant and a potential project to keep the grant funds within the community, which would include the realignment of Third Avenue South, reconstruction of the Market Square parking lot, and establishment of a new farmer's market. There was a motion and a second to pursue and explore the concept for the realignment of Third Avenue South, reconstruction of the Market Square parking lot, and the establishment of a new farmer's market, conditioned on funding coming from grants and private investment. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, consider financing options, bid letting, and schedule updates for the pool project at Witter Field. Mayor Ruwink, Tim DeSorci, and Joe Terry provided an overview of funding scenarios, milestones for completing the project in two thousand twenty, and potential impact on city debt. There was a motion and a second to proceed with bid letting for the entire scope of the Aquatic Center, and to proceed with financing for the project as presented, while continuing to pursue corporate and other donations. That motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, adjournment, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, that motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at seven forty-six PM, and I'll make a motion to approve the report withholding items seven and eight.
A motion by Zerflu to approve withholding seven and eight, and, uh, second by Katna, and I just want to, for the record, the agenda shows seven and eight, but your minutes must show seven, I want to just be clear what we're talking about here, so, one.
Would you want me to clarify?
No, I just want to, I think we know what you mean, but I just want to make sure that everyone else is aware of what you're talking about. And that's just to withhold those two items, the, the, um, uh, financing, the, the pool piece, as well as the, um, CDI grant, right? The agenda shows them as six and seven, but-
That's correct.
-it's gonna show them different, number differently. Just want to be clear.
They're numbered differently in the report, Your Honor.
Okay, no problem. Alderperson Kubasak, you're first.
Uh, are those two items separate? Are there gonna be a separate vote on those?
I believe so, yeah. Well, we wouldn't, we would go to each separately, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, just for clarification, here's why I say that, 'cause it seemed like in the past, there's been times where like, if two of them got withheld, because they're kind of similar, they've been voted on at the same time, but I just want clarification that these are gonna be two separate standalone holdout votes.
Yes, and earlier tonight, there was a motion to approve the two that were held out together, so that's why we took those two together.
Thank you.
You bet. Um, are there any further requests to speak on the, uh, the report, with the exception of the final two items? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Are there any requests to speak? That leaves us with the balance of those two items. Are there any requests to speak?
I guess the start discussion, I'll make a motion to approve item number seven in the report, or item six on the agenda.
All right, I think we, we know what you mean, thank you. We have a motion, um, Jennifer will be just caught up here in a second. All right, and, uh, we got a motion by Zerflu and a second by Kubasak. Move into discussion on item number six slash seven. So there, seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Oh, Alderperson Graff, sorry.
Um, I was not present at this meeting, does anybody have any background information that I can get on this?
Um, it's in the packet-
Yep.
...as well as it was discussed, um, which background, I guess, are there, is there a specific question that Adam or I, or someone else can ask, or answer, sorry? It's on page what? I think the packet should be two hundred, the link that the clerk had sent out today was, had a two hundred and ninety-six pages to it.
Part two and three.
Or part two and three, if, which, which file version are you open, are you in right now, do you know?
I opened the version that I received on Friday.
Yeah, there were three separate emails. Yeah, can you use the link from today, and we can pull up the-
I haven't used it.
So I guess, so you, you weren't able to review the information that was sent in the link, or the, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what we can maybe clarify here, the eleventh hour on this item. I guess while that's being reviewed, are there any further requests to speak? For my benefit, what page was this on, in our, in the packet that folks are using? I'm just trying to get to that, I've got a partial paper version there. You're probably fine then. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderperson Kubasak, you're next.
I was just gonna mention that, uh, the flight to Miami is kind of a long flight.
So the long and short of this, this is the, the state grant that was provided to the city, um, through the city to the Tribune Building project, and, um, because of a number of circumstances, the state has asked us, um, to, uh, well, whether or not we want to return the funds to the state, or if we want to work to keep the, the funds in the, in the community, and Encourage has agreed to, um, to discuss with, in support of this, in support of WDC's request to, to reallocate the funds to the property that would be exterior to the Tribune Building for the benefit of a community market, as well as, um, possibly realigning Third Avenue, uh, to accommodate, uh, a larger market and parking, and, and whatever else would be determined for that space.
And if I recall, uh, watching on the video, there's no cost to the city either, right?
That's correct. That was the, the action by the, recommendation by the committee was that to proceed with the project with no, uh, financial obligation to the city. See no further requests to speak, we have a motion to approve, you certainly can abstain, Alderperson Graff, if you don't feel you've, you're ready to, to take action, um, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one abstention.
Uh, move on to item number, uh, seven slash eight in your packets, which reads, consider financing options, bid letting, and schedule updates for the pool project at Witter Field. Alderperson Coth, you're first.
Make a motion to approve the financing, bid letting, and schedule updates for the pool project at Witter Field.
Is there a, uh, second by Katna? We'll move into discussion. Are there requests to speak, Your Honor? Alderperson Coth, you're first.
I'd like to recognize a young lady in the audience, wanted to speak on the pool.
Hi, my name is Caitlin, I live in Wisconsin Rapids, and I wanted to know what, like, what did, when will the pool actually open?
It's a great question. As of tonight, we don't have an answer to that question, but we're hoping that, uh, at some point, oh, I can't speak for the body, but I can say individually, I sure hope we'll have an answer to that question, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Are there other requests to speak? Alderperson Blazer, you're first, or next, I should say.
All right, here it goes. I, uh, usually like to wing it when I speak, but today I kind of sat down and put some thoughts together, and, so I'm gonna read them to you. Um, previously, or I have now had since two people, uh, contact me in support of the pool, and I've, I've also had people, uh, speak to me in the public, uh, just that I meet that are, are not in favor of it. But here it goes. So, this council inherited this project from previous councils. The previous councils approved the scope and single option for design of this aquatic center for an estimated twelve million dollars. The council at that time agreed to commit five million dollars to this project, seven million dollars, the balance was responsibility of the mayor and staff to secure through donations. Two years ago, the first half, two and a half million dollars of the communc, of the council's commitment was borrowed. We have a design and bid documents that the taxpayers have paid approximately six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for. This year, the re, city received a generous donation of two and a half million dollars. Also this year, the current council honoring the five million dollar commitment of the previous council, by a majority vote, agreed to borrow the additional two and a half million. Tonight, we sit here before us with the question of whether or not to approve letting this project for bid, with still approximately a four and a half million dollar shortfall. If I'm wrong on any of my numbers, please let me know. If this item is approved, the bids come in with a budget, in my opinion, or within budget, in my opinion, we are now committed to this project. If this item is voted down tonight, we will most likely lose a two and a half million dollar grant, potentially have wasted six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money. We all agree a pool is necessary, which once again, we'll have to go back, do a redesign at additional cost, delay another year to begin construction, and we will incur additional costs due to construction cost increases. Ultimately, I think we'll probably get a smaller pool for a similar cost. If we vote yes, we will, worst connect, worst case scenario, next year have to pass an additional potential four and a half million dollars of debt onto the next council to deal with, and for the citizens to pay for. Tonight, we sit here, burdened with a decision that some of us inherited, but didn't have a say in. This decision will directly impact on future budget for debt, operation, and maintenance. I will reluctantly be voting yes to let this project go to bid. I don't appreciate being in this position, because it's a no-win decision. We still have four and a half million dollar shortfall, which will once again rest solely on the mayor and staff to try to close that. The amount that we have to borrow next year will be based entirely on their ability to secure donations. Should this pass tonight, I do expect and hope that the council receive monthly updates on meetings and their outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further requests to speak? Alderperson Kubasak, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I don't have anything prepared, I guess I don't ever really write anything down, because I don't read good, and so I always kind of wing it as I do it. But it's a case where, when I make this statement, I don't necessarily, although sometimes I do try and sway people, I don't necessarily want to sway anybody away from it. Uh, I've been in favor of this, and I even remember when my father was on the city council last time, the board was even talking about a pool, because it's been that long, and it's, it is, it's a case where, um, uh, we definitely need something, and I, I've gotten, uh, uh, emails, correspondence from people, for and against, and it, it's a case where, um, I'm in favor, e- especially writing a personal check, I wrote a personal check toward the, the donation of this as well. Uh, but it's also on the flip side of it, and Mr. Blazer kind of brought it up in, in his testimony, that there was an agreement, and the agreement is, is that the council will produce five million dollars, and the city's executive team would come up with the seven million dollars, and, uh, it, once that happens, I, I'm absolutely, this is turnkey, let's get it done, but until that time, I think that I've been elected by the public to be a good steward of their finances and the fiduciary responsibilities that we have as council members, that's what I'm gonna err on the side of caution. Uh, I, I love the aspect of what we could do and what's possible out there, but I always look at, uh, worst-case scenarios, and I prepared my life financially in worst-case scenarios, and I put myself in a financial situation where I don't have to worry about what could be tomorrow, uh, whereas if it's the worst-case scenario, I can handle it moving forward. So I, I, I've just got a fear, I've got just- So I, I've just got a fear, I've got just an absolute fear of burdening our taxpayers with, potentially, and, and again, like Mr. Blazer said, I, the numbers may have changed, but at one time it was 4.5 mil. Worst-case scenario, how do we budget moving forward, and the next consecutive city councils, how are we going to deal with that, and how are we going to budget for that? And, and again, like I said, that's, that's, I'm going to vote no, but I'm not trying to influence anybody else by making this statement, but that's, I'm trying to clarify why I'm going to vote no, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder Person Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, your honor. I have the concerns too of the four and a half million, and I think that is the number. But I'm speaking in favor of, of going ahead and doing the project. I have faith that we're going to be able to, where I'm putting this, getting this faith from, I'm not quite sure, but I, I really think that we're going to be, that we'll be able to raise a good portion of that money towards this project. It's been a project that's been talked about, at least off and on, I think for 20 years at least. And we get to the point that now we've run out of pools, I think for five years or so that we haven't had one at all. And we talk about the need, the need that people want it, we, I hear the, having seen what the design is for this, is that this is, in my mind, and I think others, is to be a regional pool, in that we're going to, it's not just the city of Wisconsin Rapids, I think what this, this, the design for this is that we're going to, we have the ability with this to attract people from the surrounding area, and by that I mean Stevens Point, Marshfield. I think you'll get people from Wausau to come down. This is, this will attract people to, hopefully, and I think to bring their conventions, conferences, ball tournaments to town. There has been some talk by, I have been told by some in the past that some of our, in such, and I'll name one, is the soccer, the number of teams coming have declined, in that there's not the things for the kids to do in the area, that they're finding other places to go, that they, there's more to offer them when they're not playing. And this would, this would, I think, offers the city to market to a vast group of people and organizations. And another thing that we'd have to offer, on the, on the other end of the park is the ball team in the summertime, the rafters. That, this is a year-round, projected to be a year-round facility with hockey, but there'll be rentable spaces, buildings to, to use, to, to do things in, so it's not just not just a swimming pool that we, I think all of us grew up on seeing, in a rectangular little box. That this is going to be zero entry on the one end, there's going to be, and I think we've probably all seen the design, us sitting here anyway, to some degree, but it's a something that I think it offered to all ages to entice to come there. Not just, not just you know, mom and dad to bring the kids there, or to drop them off, or that they bike down there to do that, but it, it's a place where the family's going to go, and they can hang out together. The kids can be in the pool. My grandkids can be in the pool, and the old man that I am might be relaxing under a shade tree or something, while they're doing their thing in the, in the, in the pool. Maybe I'll go into it some point in time, but that notwithstanding. So this is, and to go back, it's, 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 it's a facility for Wisconsin Rapids. I think, I, I really think that we're going to get others to come on board, to donate money, to, to get into this project. That it's a, it's a regional pool, I think we're going to bring, it's going to entice other people to come here. It's just something that has been on the burner here for so many years. That, and way back when, it was, you know, those 20 years ago, was even talked about, not to this, the pool part of zero-depth entry and those type of things was there, but this has, you know, been growing up to be a year-round facility, like I said, with, with rentable buildings, if, if people want, organizations want to do that, that is just, I, I think would be something that would really add to, to this, to this community. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alder Person Coath, you're next.
Thank you, your honor. I'm going to vote in favor of the pool, and I'd like to point something out. It's a big price tag. And I think we've all, we're all aware of that. And we may have heard some things from citizens, and we may have not have heard things of citizens, but I really want to point something out here. Not more than an hour ago, this council chamber was packed with people on development of an apartment complex that costs the city no money. Here, we're talking about spending four and a half billion dollars. And look in the council chamber, four people, and I know every single one of them. So how concerned are the residents about spending four and a half million dollars on a pool? You'd think if there was some heartburn or some concern about it, they'd be here. And I think, as Tom alluded to in his comments, if we have to take this on ourselves, we take it on ourselves, but that doesn't mean along the way that someone might come and help the city out, another foundation or a business would be willing to step up to put something towards this pool in recognition, possibly even naming rights, depending on the size of the donation. But I have three kids, two of which have full vocabulary skills, and I have to, when they ask what to do in the summer, I can only tell them, well, we got the splash pad here in town, otherwise, we're going to have to go to the Dells, or we're going to have to go to Wausau, or we're going to have to go to somewhere else. When we go to other communities, I take my money with me. Churns into an overnight stay, churns into buying meals, churns into going to other businesses. I think Tom's absolutely right that we build this, it's a regional facility, it will bring money into this community. It's, it's an investment, and with every investment, there's a risk. And I think sometimes the risk is, doesn't look appealing to take, but sometimes you have to take it. Otherwise, we're not going to have a pool for another five years or something. But, again, you know, like I pointed out, chambers packed, when we're going to do something like simple, like somebody wants to build up an apartment complex, and we're going to spend millions of dollars and nobody's here, other than four people. And this isn't the first time. I've seen it where we spent three and a half million at wastewater. Nobody's here. Or, or yeah, even more to build. So.
Thank you, Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
You can take me off, thanks.
Okay.
I'm done.
You don't want to talk about spending more money on wastewater plants or something?
No, no, I would just go.
You spent 28 million dollars on a wastewater plant, and we're heartburn over five, seven million at a pool.
We had a good discussion today, and, you know, like, my concern is, you know, we did phase one last year, we spent money. We have phase two this year, we have West Grand, we have now the pool, and next year we're committing up to four and a half million dollars of bonding next year for that. And obviously, a capital improvement plan would be a great thing to see, to kind of see what's on the hopper next year, because right now I could say is, I'm not going to be overly ready to jump on any boat to spend and approve more millions on top of what, hopefully, hopefully you guys come through and you're able to close that gap and close to four and a half million, whatever we can get to close that gap, which will ease the pain of more borrowing next year, but, you know, that's, the problem is, we just, we're compounding in on the other borrowing, borrowing from years past and, and years to come, and, and I just think we just need to be responsible with that a little bit.
And I think, and a further point around our conversation today was, and we didn't talk about it, but something that I always consider as part of the consideration, is the fact that, you know, we, we do all these projections based upon an assumption that there's going to be no growth. And I think we'd, we'd be very disappointed, every single one of us, probably speaking for everyone in the audience, if the community didn't have a growth factor that helped account for the debt service in the future, right? You know, we, we assume that everyone's going to be carrying the same, the burden, the same debt burden today, and none of us have the crystal ball, but, but, you know, perhaps, you know, you've got additional housing investments, additional business investment. You know, what does that do to the ultimate, share of debt by household can only get better, I believe, you know, but, you know, we, none of us have a crystal ball. So I think that's something that's, goes without saying, but I think it's worth saying in this scenario. Tim did put together some information, all of you have it in your mailboxes if you weren't able to be at finance. And Tim also shared something that the donor had asked for, because the donors are very concerned. What's the burden to the taxpayer that the project, if in fact we can't raise another dime? And believe me, I'm just as concerned, because like you, I own and pay property taxes in the city too. And I think that, you know, as we go forward, whatever the decision is, you know, having that information is very, very valuable, and certainly, if there's other questions, we do have a little bit of information we might be able to answer, and I know Tim, the number wizard over there, could whip together some, some numbers if there's questions, but there's been a fair amount of information prepared prior to, to date, so. I don't see any further requests to speak. So I will move into a vote, please, the motion is to approve as presented, please cast your ballots.
Motion carries six ayes, two nays.
Thank you, and we'll be in touch with next steps as it relates to letting the project and any other correspondence on the donor front that we've been continuing to share. Move on to item nine C, Public Works Committee held on March 5th. Alder Person Rayom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your honor. Public Works Committee, we had two meetings. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, others attending are on file listed below. List in clerk's office. Number one, called order, the meeting was called order at 6 o'clock. Item two, review the DPW report, the DPW report was reviewed. Item three, review proposals for concrete curb and sidewalk and take action. There's a motion in second to approve the apparent low bidder by Pember companies for $550,064.03, the motion carried. Item four, review proposals for administration of any hazardous material encountered during the East Grand Avenue project and take action. There was a motion in second to approve the hazardous material service proposal by Robert E. Lee, up to $20,000. That motion passed unanimously. Item five, review the referral list, items 10 and 11 were removed. There's a referral by Alder Person Graff to review the snow and ice control policy. Item six was adjourned, there's a motion in second adjourned, the motion passed, meeting adjourned at 6:40, 6:00 PM. And with that, your honor, I move for adoption of the report.
A motion by Rayom and a second by Coath, any discussion on that report? See no requests to speak, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots. At first I thought we had some ghost voting over there, I didn't see whose, whose buttons were lighting up. Shane, do you want to vote on this one? Okay. If not, we'll just roll, roll with it.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, that, item nine D, Public Works Committee meeting held on March 12th.
Thank you, your honor. Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, in first floor conference room at City Hall. Tom Rayom, Thaddeus Kubashek, and Jill Terry were present. Item one was called a meeting to order, the meeting was called order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review the west side lift station change order request and to take action. There's a motion in second to approve the change order and deducts recommended by staff as presented, with future building decisions to be determined by the city council. Motion passed two zero. Item three was adjourned, there's a motion in second adjourned, the motion passed two zero, motion, a meeting adjourned at 5:28 PM, and with that, your honor, I move for adoption of the report.
A motion to approve by Rayom and a second by Coath, we'll move into requests to speak. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one abstention, zero nays.
Move on to item nine E, the Human Resources Committee meeting held on March 8th. Alder Person Coath, move to you for those two reports.
Thank you, your honor. Human Resources Committee met on March 8th, 2019, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were in attendance, a list of others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 1:03 PM. First item then was to review or the approval of a third-party proposal to provide an employee survey. This was a follow-up from Alder Person Graff's referral. Sarah Christensen from Ideation Consulting communicated her background and the ability to cultivate strategic partnerships with human resources that allow, that allows measuring work climate and employee engagement. There was a discussion with follow-up question, answer session. A motion was made by Chairperson Coath and seconded by Alder Person Scott Kellogg to approve the proposal as presented, to provide the employee survey, point-of-view interviews, and executive summary. Motion carried. Item three was a discussion on approval for changes to the city's current retirement policy as it relates to creating an incentive for employees to provide notice of their retirement date. This was a referral from Chairperson Coath. Continued discussion regarding retirement policy and comparison to how other municipalities currently handle notice for retirements. A motion was made by Alder Person Zerflu to follow the recommendation to implement a 30-day notice and eliminate the inability to use floating holiday and personal time. Alder Person Kellogg seconded the motion. After further discussion, Chairperson Coath asked for unanimous consent to withdraw the motion. There is no objection, the motion was drawn. A motion was made by Chairperson Coath and seconded by Alder Person Zerflu to revisit this topic next month, after options are presented by city staff. Motion carried. Item four was discussion regarding the IT lead position. Discussion regarding the change in title, job scope, and responsibilities of the IT position to ensure recruiting success. Human Resources is waiting on the feedback from a third-party consultant, Archer, who provides benchmarking information. A motion was made by Chairperson Coath, seconded by Alder Person Zerflu to approve the creation of the IT manager position, job description, and salary as presented with the salary contingent on benchmarking feedback from Archer, and to amend, and to amend the proposed education requirement language to consider relevant work experience and formal training in lieu of degree. Motion carried. Item five was the standing item for current city job openings, the city currently had the following positions open. IT Director, GIS Coordinator, IT Intern, Multimedia Coordinator, Senior City Inspector, Entry Level Firefighter, Entry Level Patrol Officer. Interviews are currently taking place on the GIS Coordinator and IT Intern and Multimedia Coordinator. All the city's positions can be found on the city website with WIrapids.org. Item six was discussion and approval. Item six was discussion and approval for changes to the city's current merit pay provision section of the pay provisions policy, this was a follow-up from the February Common Council meeting. Discussion around the language change from February Common Council meeting, motion made by Chairperson Coth, seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to accept the pay provision policy and Section 11, Paragraph 8 has presented, the motion carried. Item seven was to set the next meeting date, which the next regular meeting of the HR Committee will be Friday, April 5th, at 1:00 PM in the first-floor conference room. Item number eight was adjournment, motion was made by Alderperson Zerflu, seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to adjourn, motion carried, the meeting was adjourned at 2:53 PM. And with that, I move for adoption of the minutes.
We have a motion to approve by Coth and a second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Motion, or, sorry, request by Catnaugh, you're first.
Thank you. So I'm happy to see that we are looking at an employee engagement survey. Was disappointed, however, that we only had one option in the room that night. There's a lot of employee engagement surveys out there, I thought her presentation was good, I just would have liked something for us to consider that side by side. That being said, I understand the timeline, this is something we would want to get out and to staff and get engaged with as soon as possible, being where we're at if we want some data for 2019. I would just say that before, you know, we would consider going in a deeper partnership with this particular vendor, or continuing in years after this, we, we use this year as a trial. At the company I've worked with, we've done a lot of employee engagement surveys, some are good, some are bad, so I don't, if, when we move forward with this tonight, I would just like to say that I think we should consider this and keep in mind that there are other options out there, and that when we go through this process, depending on how it ends up, we take a look at other options next year, even if it goes well, just so we see what else is out there. Thank you.
Alderperson Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question, to make it clear in my mind, I guess, to clarify it, at least what I'm reading, and that's on number six, and that's the, the merit pay, fifty dollars, is that, is that the right number? I mean, it's there, but is that?
It was changed to fifty dollars per week.
Per week?
Per week.
Okay. So, two hundred or a month then?
Yes.
I'm not gonna necessarily argue against it being too low maybe, but I just, because I don't know how you really put a dollar figure on some of this stuff, but somebody could be put on, or fill in on a job, whatever, a vacancy for, you know, a period of time that a lot of extra work went into, and I, you know, the fifty dollars a week just doesn't seem like it's a fit-all situation, and that's why I just, you know, if there's something that was taken care of maybe in a, to fill, you know, to fill in or to take care of for two weeks or something like that, maybe then it would be, but even in that case, you know, it just, it just, to me, seems like a low number, but again, how, what, how do you put a dollar figure on what's being done, but I don't know if fifty dollars is justified for any of the thing that may be done, so. Just, just the comment I had when I, I read it, that, you know, I, I couldn't put a dollar on it myself to put in a, into something like this, but unless I'm, unless there's, I'm reading something wrong out of it, so, thank you.
Thank you. I think there might have been a question of whether or not there was some additional language in the policy, or on a pre-arrangement, so if the council were to have pre-agreed in advance, we knew there was gonna be a vacancy and a process, yeah, at a time of an appointment. Sorry, it must not be in, it's not in the, it's not in the written material, so if that has to come back, then we may have to bring that one back. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, move into a vote, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item nine F, Human Resources Committee meeting held on March 11th. Alderperson Coth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met at 2:00 PM, Monday, March 11th, in the first-floor conference room at, that should be third-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were in attendance, a list of others attending is on file with the city clerk. The meeting was called to order at 2:00 PM. Item two, the committee discussed a grievance filed by the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association. WRPPA Representative Rich Birdhouse explained the grievance, the grievance involves health insurance premium contributions. In open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. A motion was made to go into closed session by Chairperson Coth, seconded by Alderperson Kellogg, a roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, and the motion carried. In closed session, the committee discussed the grievance filed by the WRPPA. A motion to return to open session was made by Chairperson Coth, seconded by Alderperson Zerflu, a roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, motion carried. The committee returned to open session. Alderperson Kellogg made a motion to deny the WRPPA grievance, and Chairperson Coth seconded the motion. The motion carried, with Alderperson Zerflu voting the negative. Item six was adjourned, the meeting adjourned at 2:43 PM. And with that, I would move for adoption of the minutes.
Motion to approve by Coth and a second by Kellogg, are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, six ayes, two nays.
Uh, thank you. Item 10, reports of other committees, commissions, and boards, department reports. Item A is Ethics Board held on February 14th. Item B, McMillan Memorial Library Annual Report. Item C, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held on March 6th. Item D, the Southwood County Airport Commission held on February 14th. Item E, the Police and Fire Commission held on February 13th and March 13th. Item F, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Summary for February 2019. And item G, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission meeting held on February 13th. And item H, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission Special Meeting held on February 13th. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
Motion to approve by Coth, is there a second? Second by Graff, or by Zerflu, sorry, I didn't hear what it was.
Can I speak?
We'll get to you, and as soon as we, as soon as we get the motion on the floor, I'll recognize. Second by whoever wants to pull at the second, Zerflu. All right, now, Scott, we'll go ahead and take you.
Okay, I represent the Common Council and Library Board, and I know the mayor mentioned that the Library Board was up for a national award, but it's a big deal, it really is a big deal. It's a national award for museums and library services, and it's given to American libraries and museums with outstanding services, and it's the national highest honor. And awards, awards would be given to five museums throughout the whole country, and then five libraries throughout the whole country. And I just look back, it started in 1949, and in 1949, there were only three museums or libraries that were identified in Wisconsin since that time. In 2011, the Madison Children's Library was identified as a museum, and in 2016, the Madison Public Library was identified, and in 2017, the Woodson Art Museum in Wausau. So during that time, there was only one public library in Wisconsin, and so I think we should be very proud, and we'll know in about, I'm not sure when, but let's say within the next two months. It's a real badge of honor. I think the library is the jewel of the city, when you see all the people participate, from young to seniors, so, I just, it's more in-depth than just an award, it's, it's, you know, throughout the United States.
I concur. Thank you, Scott. Alderperson Rayom.
Yeah, just a comment, with the airport, and so everybody knows that, that, you know, a lot goes on there, have been trying to improve what, what is out there, but what I'd like to just comment on, they're, are having a drone seminar coming up on April 13th, I believe it is, Saturday, so if people would be interested in attending that, there should be some more info coming out on that, but I wanted to bring it up because that'll take place before our next council meeting, so. And also in May, they are having a Young Eagles Rally on May 4th, on a Saturday, too, so I just wanted to make sure that, that we're all aware of it as it's in our minutes, but that the public is aware of this, too, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve, the reports, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 11, referral of communications to committees. Alderperson Coth?
I got, I understand that this winter was extraordinary, and as we've all seen in the news, we've had some problems with flooding. I did get a call from a business owner that was concerned about gutters being cleared out on Eighth and Apple, I think Joe already handed, handled it, but they were wondering if the city's gonna have a policy, or if there is a policy on this for clearing those gutters out, so I'd like to send that to Public Works Committee if that's an option to have that looked at.
Thank you, Alderperson. Kubishek, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I got a quick referral for our own committee, Mr. Rayom. Whenever there is a special committee meeting, not necessarily the regular committee meeting because we know about that, but whenever there's a special committee meeting, if committee members could get a telephone call by whoever calls that special committee meeting, because it, and not that it's anybody's fault or anything like that, but what I like to do is be proactive, and, and it was a case where I almost missed the committee meeting, and if I had had, and actually, I had called Tom when I found, found out about it, and I told him that I was not gonna be available, and at the last minute, I was able to leave work because we've been busy, and, and it's kinda hard to get off the job site depending upon where I'm working at, but if I didn't show up, Tom and Joe Terry would have been the only two there, and that would have only left one committee member, so, if, whoever calls it, so if it's a committee chairperson that calls the special meeting, if it's a committee member that calls it, or if it's any other staff, or even the mayor for that matter, I would like to have it for our committee rules that the other two committee members, or all three committee members are called in advance, and just a message left on the home phone, you know, typically, I'm gone, no one else lives at my house, so a phone call would probably last fifteen seconds to, to let me know that there's a special committee meeting, so. So, yeah, that'll be referral for next committee meeting, thank you.
Alderperson Graff, you're next.
Um, I would like to make a referral to the Public Works for the review of collection services. I'd also make, like to make another referral to the Public Works for fire department improvements as it relates to gender-specific areas. And then, I would like to make a referral to the HR Committee, kind of a thing that I've had an issue with ever since I got on council, and the main reason is, is because I think we should have some sort of a policy that if and when a new Alderperson gets on board, we have some sort of a meet and greet for new Alderpersons as far as getting caught up on where we are legislatively, and then getting caught up to like who the department heads and put a name to a face, instead of trying to learn it as you go. I think there should be a policy in the breast of, you know, in April, April election, if we do it in mid-May, you know, I would leave it up to your committee to decide, but I would like to see something in regards to some sort of new Alderperson policy. Thank you.
And I think we'd like some feedback on the last point, orientation, because a number of us spent a bit of time to coordinate that orientation, that wasn't well-attended, frankly, and I think a number of folks walked in late, so, I think if folks do take the time to orient, that folks actually attend. That didn't happen the last time that we spent a considerable amount of time pulling that off. The first referral, just so I can clarify, for Public Works was on collection services, what collects, was that?
Refuse, refuse collection services.
Sorry, maybe I didn't hear that.
And then, the other thing, point of order as far as, or not a point of order, but I want to ask the question is, when was it the last time you had an orientation for new Alderpersons?
It was the first meeting right after the election.
First meeting after the election last spring?
Right.
And I, I'm just gonna tell you and, and take it for the fact that I was new on the council, but I didn't think it was, at least wasn't communicated effectively. So if we're gonna go to a new-
We'll certainly review the communication on that.
-type of style, and then take a look at the communication.
Sure. Alderperson Zerflu?
I was just gonna point out, there's a legislative committee meeting coming up. I don't know if it was set yet, but as procedurally, I don't think we have a chairman for that committee, so I don't know if that's something we need to hash out ahead of time, or.
I think we, the first item on the agenda was gonna be to elect a chairperson.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Unless you wanted to pass an ordinance that said who the chair was from one of the standing committees, but-
Yeah, for some reason, I thought that would have been in it, but I guess not, so, that's okay.
Alderperson Catnaugh, you're next. Okay. You don't want to stay here? Anybody else? Nobody else? We got a motion to adjourn by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Coth, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for being here, and have a good rest of your evening.